Good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to the Recreation and Parks Committee Public Hearing. Today is Wednesday, March 8th, and we are beginning shortly after 4:30. I would like to welcome my colleague, Michael Stenziano, and we will go ahead and begin the hearing. The intention of the public hearing is to review upcoming legislation which will be scheduled to appear on upcoming council agendas in the Recreation and Parks Committee. We are also going to talk about the Special Event Support Program that Director Collins is going to kind of unveil today, so very excited to hear about that as well. And we have with us Director Tony Collins, as well as Jason Nicholson, and we would like to go ahead and give it over to Director Collins. Thank you.
Chairman Page, council members, thank you for having us today and appreciate the opportunity for this public input process on these two pieces of, well, one piece of legislation and one program that we're working on that we know have a lot of stakeholders in the community that want to provide input, and so this is a good opportunity to share that information, collect input this evening, but also invite further input via, you know, email, calls to our office, and I know we've got some further meetings scheduled with other stakeholders this week. So, we appreciate that opportunity. To, in order, of which order do you want to address? Do you want to start with the legislation, 919?
I'll start with the legislation.
Okay. So, to start with, what we are proposing is a revision to City Code 91913, which provides guidance and direction to alcohol permission in parks. We have submitted a copy of the revision. Most of the changes are highlighted. Hopefully, you can see that in your versions. Section C has four lines and sections, actually, I'm sorry, goes all the way down in section Area 2, Area 3, 4, 5, 6, and 7, and then Section D has a small edit. What this is, from a content standpoint, what we're trying to do is bring what is currently in practice and the ordinance in line together. Some of the ordinance has what I would say, the evolution of our community, the evolution of our city, the ordinance has maybe a little outdated and we need to adjust. So, for example, addressing the Batel Riverfront and the Santa Maria replica, since those aren't in place anymore, we wanted to address the titles. But some of it is to make clear the ability for the department to allow for alcohol in our downtown district parks and facilities upon approval, of course. You know, the organizations that would request this use, or including our own department, would have to go through the State of Ohio liquor control licensing requirements. This doesn't change any of that. This just authorizes the city and the City Recreation and Parks Department to enable these parks and facilities in the downtown district to host events and to allow folks to come in, our partners, to host events in our parks and facilities and provide alcohol as a part of their event. I believe that addresses the basic pieces. We believe that the language here both aligns with our current practice and empowers us to move forward on a couple of areas. For example, Goodale Park, enabling, working with partners to allow the alcohol within the park sales versus just on the street adjacent. So, those are things that are included in this ordinance. I will, I want to mention that we've had some questions come up through the commission process and through other public input about whether or not we should expand this ability throughout the city and looking at other neighborhood parks and other parts of our great city, whether it's Whetstone Park or Westgate, Franklin Park, those areas. And while we believe that that's something we should look into, we believe right now, we believe the best approach today is to just to focus on the areas that we already are doing it in our downtown district, and we will continue to review the other neighborhoods, get some additional public input, and possibly include that consideration in future requests as we develop our one-stop-shop approach to special event support and hosting. So, today, we're just asking for the downtown district. I believe I've covered it all. I'm going to look at Jason, who's our Special Events Administrator, and just, Jason, have I missed anything in terms of the code require, or code revisions?
No. Essentially, the Director has spoken very thoroughly about the content of what we're trying to do within the downtown district. The main thing is just to recognize that there are lots of cultural programs taking place in these downtown parks, that there would be neighborhood association, residential association, area association approval that would be required. We would require a letter of support before we did any type of processing, so there is a community input process in place that would allow us to make sure everybody's on the same page.
And the last thing I'll add is just that this is an application process still. There's, any type of organization, any type of event, has to go through an application process. Those individual applications have to go through our commission and then approved throughout the year.
Thank you so much, Director, and thank you, Jason. I'd like to welcome my colleague, Councilmember Shannon Harden. Thank you for joining us this afternoon. And Director or Jason, could you speak briefly, you may have already mentioned this, is this code revision exclusive to the parks that are mentioned? If I have a neighborhood park in my neighborhood, again, am I able to apply for a liquor permit?
Again, this, yeah, this will be for the downtown district parks and facilities, and that's an identified district that all city departments utilize for planning purposes and programming. Service Department uses the same parameters, Development Department uses the same parameters of the downtown district.
Thank you. Do either of my colleagues have any questions? Well, thank you. You can move on now to the Special Event Support Program.
Thank you, council members, and Chairman Page and council members. We're really excited about this new opportunity to present a pilot program. We have worked with council in the past, for the past years, to work with some funds that are retained by the city from the bed tax dollars. Those funds have been allocated to the department for different uses. In 2016, $190,000 was allocated to CRPD for a variety of uses, including supporting special events within the department, as well as supporting special events outside of the department. Included in here is sports tournament support, fountain side, Jazzin' Ribs, Rhythm on the River, Scioto Mile programming, as well as, and specifically, a $44,000 allocation in 2016 to provide for a partnership through sponsorship program. The partnership through sponsorship program was an application program that special event entities, nonprofits in the community could provide, or could submit an application for support for up to $5,000 for their particular event. It's in recognition that the city council, the mayor, and the administration want to support our local community events and help them with infrastructure as well. And so, that fund, that fund has been there and has been successful, and we have a number of community events that have benefited from those funds over the years. What we were proposing in 2017 is we're requesting $212,000 to be allocated to CRPD. We're proposing a different breakout of that allocation. We're proposing $150,000 be set aside in what we would call a sponsorship support program, sponsor, a special event support program, I'm sorry. A similar process with some modifications. An application process would be offered to our special event groups that are interested to apply. There'd be a timeline adopted once the funds were allocated and we knew specific dates. We'd provide a timeline, we'd communicate out to our special events group, we'd provide the application to them along with the criteria. There'd be opportunities for five different categories of requests. The maximum request could be for up to $25,000. The minimum request for a first-time event for, you know, essentially, an innovation-type grant would be $2,500. There would be specific eligibility requirements, which we've provided for you in the explanation. I won't go through all of those bullet points, but for example, they would have a history in Columbus, it'd be a nonprofit organization recognized by the State of Ohio as a nonprofit, have some other, there's a number of other requirements that they would need to provide. There would be specific events that would not be eligible, including block parties, parades, annual lunches, events, private events, those types of programs would not be, these would be funds available to events for the public, as we believe those are appropriate uses of the taxpayer dollars. If the group meets the criteria to apply and they apply, there would be a review process. There'd be a committee established with a representative from council, representative from the mayor's office, our team, as well as, we had a good conversation with GCAC this afternoon and Experience Columbus, we've talked about inviting them in on the team and helping us score these applications. The application then would be scored and funds would be awarded based on the eligibility of the different categories. So, for example, Category A would be a total average annual budget of at least $200,000, a minimum consecutive three-year track record, effective marketing strategies for the regional markets beyond the Columbus area, a venue footprint that includes multiple public venues like parks and streets, recruits 50 or more vendors, and estimated attendance of more than 75,000 people. That's just one example. I won't go through all criteria, but the idea would be those funds would be awarded in those categories. There are things that we believe that the funding is, should be eligible for, for example, event production costs, equipment rental, marketing, printing, publications, venue rental, security, things like that, that are important to the public good. However, we don't believe it should be allowable for things like staffing for the organization, preparation for the proposal, or other things that might be of what I would call select-user benefit and not the greater public benefit. We provided for you some background, some review criteria, a little bit more detail in terms of the application process, and then a timeline. We would then, after the award process, each year, we would do a report, provide council with a report of what, who was funded. We would have an evaluation where our staff would go out and visit the event, evaluate the event, so we have a record on file for the following year for eligibility for future grant proposals. This is, as hopefully you're hearing, this is, this is taking existing dollars that we've awarded in the past and putting a little bit more qualification behind it, and the whole idea is that we want to approach it from an equitable standpoint. We want to make sure that our event organizations are treated fairly and each have the equal opportunity and access. And we also want to recognize the size and scope of events, so that some of the larger events that draw people in, that might have room nights associated with them, which provide the dollars towards the bed tax, are recognized for their size and scope, as well as leaving funding for those smaller events that are having great impacts in our neighborhoods as well. So, we believe this is a broad approach to it. We want to, I want to be clear that this is a pilot. This is a first year. We are doing everything, including tonight, to gather input into this process. The version you have in front of you has now gone through, I think, five or six edits, and we continue to edit it based on input. I talked to Councilmember Tyson this afternoon. She offered some input as well. I have a meeting with Tom Katzenmeyer on Friday. I look forward to his input. So, when we bring you back the final version, it'll be a program ready for a pilot for 2017. We'll operate it and monitor it, evaluate it at the end of the year, make recommendations, and hopefully bring you back an even better product in 2018. Anything to add?
I think the only thing I'd like to add is that this is an expansion of a program that we've had in place since 1995, and we didn't just go about this by, you know, working within a vacuum, looking in our office and trying to think about it. We did substantial research among the top 20 cities in the country, reviewing best practices, expenses, revenues, how they work within supporting their cultural events, and this is not a unique situation to Columbus. Many major cities are having, having to balance between giving funds and supporting things that bring national exposure, as well as retaining the cultural value of the activities that they have that have become a fabric of their society. So, I just wanted to make sure that if any of you have any questions about, you know, what those other cities are doing, feel free to let us know.
The final two things that I would add is that I can't understate enough that we want to do this in collaboration with our partners in the community, Greater Columbus Art Council, Experience Columbus, and so that's important that I tell you that we're still working with them to gain their input, and we'll definitely report back to you on that, just like tonight is an opportunity for us to garner input and use that in, you know, the creation of this process. The end product, we believe, will provide an excellent opportunity for the department to provide equitable access. By no means do we believe this is a silver bullet, and we'll accomplish everything, you know, for everyone, but we believe this is a good comprehensive approach to get us started.
Thank you, Director. Are there any questions from my colleagues?
I do have a, Councilmember Biden, I do have a couple of questions for you, Director. Initially, you said that there's a request for $212,000, with $150,000 being dedicated to the Special Event Support Program. The other $62,000, could you speak to where that would kind of go? Thank you.
Yes, Councilmember Page, members of council, I'm glad you asked that. I did leave that part out. I want to point out that of the remaining $62,000, we are, we're proposing to appropriate $20,000 to remain with CRPD, to invest in our tournament hosting ability at our athletic complexes, both at Burr Liner and our basketball complexes. We learned this year, and I'll be reporting soon to, Burr Liner itself had a $66 million economic impact in 2016 through all the events and programs that it hosts, including the largest U-14 softball tournament in the country in 2016. So, we want to continue to invest in that facility, as well as our other athletic complexes, to make them more appropriate and better for our tournament hosts. The other piece is a $17,000 citywide music licensing. We're required, as a city, anytime we use our stages or perform our own events, to have music licensing required, you know, payment to ASCAP, and I believe there's two other licensing agencies that we use for those. And the last is Rhythm on the Ri, I'm sorry, not Rhythm on the Ri, Jazzin' Rib Festival. We asked for a portion to be dedicated. It is a large regional event, and it does attract folks from around the state and around the central Ohio region to come in, to stay and visit and celebrate in downtown Columbus, and we do not want to compete with the other events in that $150,000 fund, so we set that money aside, so there's no perception of competition with our partners.
Thank you. Councilmember Harden?
Thank you, Chair Page. Thank you, Director and Jason, for really all the work that you do. I think that this pilot is really needed and appreciated by, certainly by council and probably the community, because it brings clarity to a lot of folks who are doing a lot of good work in planning events that are making our city so prosperous. I was wondering, sometimes when we work with event, big events, there are conversations around, like, in-kind or services that the city can engage with. Is that dealt with in this pilot? And how do we, how are, is your office in this program, does that, will that encompass that too, or how will we deal with those?
Councilmember Harden, members of council, that's a great question, and, you know, it was actually the last point that I was trying to get to, and I lost it in my concluding statements, is that there are a number of other pieces of this puzzle that need to be addressed yet, and this doesn't answer all of those questions. So, for example, we do have a fee structure. We have a fee structure in place to use our facilities and for our event support staff, the cost. We believe that the taxpayer expects that we subsidize our supportive events, but that specific costs that are attributed to a specific event are expected to be paid for. But that's part of the question, right? You know, some of these dollars that'll be presented to these organizations are going to be turned around and paid to provide the infrastructure and support from the department. So, I think at another time, we need to come back and have that conversation about what's that level of subsidy? If the service costs, I'm going to make up a number, if the service costs $100 to provide, do we want to give it to at 50%? Do we want to fully subsidize it? And I think that that's a conversation for another day. Today, we have our costs based on what we believe is a pricing policy that's agreeable to the general public, based on input from the citizens that we've received throughout our time. The other pieces of the puzzle that aren't addressed in here are other things like event space, and what about the larger events? And what about things that don't qualify as a special event, races and conferences and meetings? And this does not address any of those things. This is just for special events that we are requested, we get a number of requests, as I know you do as well, from a large variety of event groups that put on small neighborhood events, all the way to mega-regional events, and this addresses those specifically. There definitely needs to be a carried-out conversation on those other parts, and I hope to get back, you know, I hope to be able to answer that for you later down the road.
Thank you, Director. I appreciate that. And then, this is my last point, really is a, I think, a point of appreciation. I see that one of the review criteria is ability to enhance community engagement, cultural benefit, and attract visitors. I would just even more so encourage that we stress that one of the things that we look to do is to encourage diversity in our events, be that Asian or whatever, African-American events, that we want to make sure that everybody has access to these dollars and that the great diversity of our community is shown through our investment in these programs.
Councilmember Harden, members of council, I couldn't agree with you more. I mean, that's part of the reason why this fund is set up in the first place, is to support that cultural advocacy through those events and to celebrate our community and the diversity in our great city. So, we definitely, we wanted to make sure that these events are equitably, you know, served in this, even, you know, our existing events that have great tradition and great history, but as we develop new communities in our, in our city, we want to be able to support them when they come about too, and that's why I like that innovation piece, that entry-level piece for that first-time festival, but also the support for the established events that celebrate that diversity. So, 100% agree.
Thank you, Councilmember Biden. Councilmembers Stenziano?
Thank you, Madam Chair and Director. Appreciate you both bringing forward the pilot program. A quick question, pretty sure I know the answer, but I've already had some organizations reach out. In terms of the proposed timeline, their events are going to be held before then. Would the advice be kind of deferred to our current process, since they aren't going to fall within this timeline, or would there be room to kind of discuss cultural, regional event that's already reached out, it's going to occur before the April 17th event or deadline?
Councilmember Stenziano, members of council, we have not been approached by anybody prior to this related to that. That's a great question. Typically, we don't award funds until the funding is provided to us, right? I mean, we would have to gain the funding from council to be able to award it. In the past, we have not received these funds until this time period as well. My suggestion would be if the events happened in 2000, if it's already happened, or, you know, might happen prior to this being accepted, is that to look forward to the following year, to consider the event funding for the following year. And I would suggest that while the funding is allocated for 2017, I would assume that if an event happens in an April or March timeframe, that there may be consideration from the team about those for the following year, if that makes sense, for 2018. Good question.
Thank you, Councilmember Stenziano, and I have one more question before we go to our public speakers. Director, in 2016, the department asked for $190,000 for events, and through this program, there's now a total request for $212,000, but $150,000 that would be dedicated to those events. Could you talk about that $40,000 increase and how you came up with $150,000 being appropriate?
Absolutely. Councilmember Page, members of council, what we've done here is we've estimated, based on the current events that are supported in 2016, we allocated those funds into that $150 number. So, an event that may have received funding in 2016 under a different category, we believe that they'll apply under this program in 2017, so we've asked for that, and that number actually is the $40,000 delta that we believe that will come into play here. So, we're planning on those events, we're planning on other events that this program opens up eligibility to, and we also believe that this, I mentioned earlier, while we do provide the first-time grant for the smaller festival, there is opportunities to recognize the scope of an event here, that an event may actually be eligible for more funding than they were eligible for in 2016. So, if that's, so we also budgeted a little bit of leeway for that. As you know, the dollars, while we had a good year, Experience Columbus tells us, we had a great bed tax year in 2016, we heard about all the great stories in Columbus, and there was a significant amount of dollars that came in, there is only so many dollars that are available, and in the pilot program, we felt that $150,000 was a good number to start with. If, and I'm guessing we'll have more application requests than there is dollars available, and we'll do our best to score those with that committee, and if we see that there's a number past that, we'll definitely report that to council, and we'll talk about what our action steps going forward are.
Thank you, Director. Do either you or Jason have any additional comments? Councilmember Stenziano? Well, now, we would like to begin our public testimony. All interested citizens are invited to offer public testimony. Your comments will be limited to three minutes. Individuals wishing to offer testimony, I hope you have filled out a speaker slip, and we will begin with our first speaker. Mr. John Fornell, if you could come down to the podium. Again, you have three minutes. Thank you for coming to council this afternoon. If you could, let us know any organizations you are representing, and we welcome your comments. Thank you.
Good afternoon. Thank you, Councilmember Page, Councilmember Stenziano. My name is John Fornell, and I'm a current resident of German Village, and also the current treasurer of German Village Garden Club. The Garden Club is a federal 501(c)(3) charitable organization, and our vision is to cultivate community one garden at a time. This is supportive with our mission to celebrate horticultural, community beautification, and gardening in our urban historic neighborhood. The Garden Club is active in German Village. Our great accomplishments are community beautification. We revitalize and maintain beautiful Frank Fettich Park, which is one of the finest parka parks in the United States. It is a favorite gathering for tourists and residents. We often find residents from European countries visiting the park as it reminds them of their native homelands. The Garden Club plants and maintains the planters down Third Street as well. This also prevents or provides a year-round color and accent our urban and historic neighborhoods. Our community beautification projects, in concert with our sister Park Schiller, greatly contribute to the appeal of German Village. We take great pride in maintaining our gardens and sharing them with all in an effort to keep German Village a premier living and tourist attraction. Our projects do require significant funding. The German Village Garden Club spends thousands of dollars each year to maintain these beautiful spaces. This year, we plan to introduce neighborhood window boxes and front skate beautification competitions, which will further enhance our community. Fundraising is what makes these projects possible, in addition to the many volunteer hours by our members. We talked about fundraising for Frank Fettich Park to be held in the park to showcase this beautiful treasure. However, with most social fundraising events, serving alcohol is critical to obtaining a significant attendance. The current alcohol policy in the parks prevent this from happening. The German Village Garden Club strongly supports revisions to the City Code 919.13, which would allow for not-for-profit charitable organizations to include alcohol sales in our events. This will help to further our mission, increase tourism to our great city, and provide for an increased quality life for our residents. Thank you, council members, for the opportunity to present, and if you have any questions, I'll be glad to try to answer those.
Thank you so much, Mr. Fornell. I don't have any questions. Well, again, thank you for coming down, and thank you for your comments.
Sure, thank you.
Our next speaker is Carol Mullenex. Again, you have three minutes. If you could let us know any organizations you are representing, and thank you for coming down this afternoon.
I appreciate the opportunity that you've given us today to comment on this proposal. My name is Carol Mullenex, and I am president of the Board of Actors Theater of Columbus. A lot of people know us as Shakespeare in the Park. We perform Memorial Day weekend to Labor Day weekend, four nights a week, Thursday through Sunday, and we concentrate on classical theater, so we do a lot of Shakespeare, although we're doing Pride and Prejudice this year, so that'll be fun. The, we, our stage, outdoor stage, is located inside of Schiller Park. We have been there for, this is our 36th year. Started just performing on the grass, and we finally, the city built a stage, and we got to perform there. We draw about 20,000 people over the summer to come in to see our performances. People bring their lawn chairs, blankets, sit down and enjoy it. Just recently won the Columbus Theater Roundtables Award for Production of the Year, for Four Excellence in Acting Awards, an Excellent in Directing Award, plus the Dispatch has named one of our plays Best Plays 2012, 14, 15, 16, and we have our fingers crossed for 2017. The reason, oh, and I also wanted to mention, we also do a lot of educational programs. We work with a couple of schools in helping teachers learn about Shakespeare for their curriculum, working directly with the students. Education is a big part of what we do. We think that's important, because it is very, is important not only throughout life, but just in that moment, to be able to see that language and understand it and express yourselves. I think it's just a great opportunity. yourselves. I think it's just a great opportunity. The, I'm telling you all of this for one reason. We do all of that on a budget of $150,000 a year. One-third comes from grants, love to hear about grants, one-third from donations. Our, our performances are free, but we pass the hat and get money from that. And then, one-third from events. And in terms of events, just as Mr. Fornell stated, being able to have a nice event in the park where we could very carefully and, and with the right parameters serve alcohol would help us in our fundraising, because right now, it's, it's not possible. And, and because we perform in the park, to have an event somewhere else and then have to get everyone back to the park in time for performance, it's just not, it just doesn't work very well. We very much want to look at that, are, we're very much interested in anything that would allow us to expand that the events portion of the income coming into us. We have all kinds of great ideas. We are very interested in working with the city to do this, and we are very much in support of this proposal.
Well, thank you so much, Carol. Again, we appreciate your comments, and we thank you for the work that you're doing. I've heard a lot of great things about Shakespeare in the Park. Our next speaker is Shilo Todorov. Again, you have three minutes, and thank you for coming down to council. If you could let us know any organizations that you are representing as well.
Chair Page, Councilwoman, thank you for the opportunity to speak. I'm Shilo Todorov with German Village Society, the executive director. German Village Society is 58 years old this year. We are the preservation, education arm of the village down there, working arm in arm with our Historic District Commission. And it's been almost 30 years since we put together a public-private partnership with Reckon Parks and the City of Columbus to restore Schiller Park. And since then, our committee, that is our Friends of Schiller Committee, has been working directly with Reckon Parks to make investments in the park and to be very hands-on in terms of the maintenance, the welcome gardens, the trees, and much, much more. I'm glad to be here today and able to testify with my colleagues from the Garden Club and Actors Theater, because it's often easy to confuse us as one organization. We have very distinct needs and very distinct missions, but we work together great. This year, so we, of course, are known for once having an Oktoberfest in Schiller Park, but that's been many years ago. I'm going to come back to Oktoberfest and a couple of questions that I want to raise for your consideration as you look at this ordinance. We're very much in favor of it. This year is the 150th anniversary of Schiller Park. We intend to take our pre-tour, which is the night before House and Garden Tour, down to the park in order to make it part of the celebration. And the difference between trying to hold it kind of near the park under current rules and have it in the street versus the ability to truly experience the park in its 150th year as part of our major gala would just be a real treat for our entire neighborhood. Our House and Garden Tour event accounts for 50% of our income for the year for German Village Society, and about 70% of receipts for that weekend come from pre-tour. So, it's really a key event, both for us to celebrate, but to raise money and to show off our mission of preservation. So, if I may, I just want to ask, raise a couple of issues that I see in, not so much directly the ordinance, but in some of the talking points and the, the support documents that Mr. Nicholson provided. One is that state law allows temporary liquor permit holders to be not-for-profit organizations, and nothing prevents the organization from utilizing park space if they follow that. I'd like to know more, and I'll, I'll take these answers offline, of course, to understand what the neighborhood's role, because we need to have a letter of support for anyone who's going to show up in Schiller Park, what the neighborhood's role in vetting those nonprofits is, to be sure that they are truly neighborhood organizations meant to be using the park in these ways. And what's the, and if there's any expectation or limitation for how many times a year this can happen. Certainly, going back to Oktoberfest, we don't want to bring Oktoberfest back to the park, because we'd be in trouble with our neighbors. So, we just want to have some ability to put a lid on that. Thank you.
Yes, thank you so much, Shilo. And I'll ask Jason and Director Collins, maybe speak with you briefly after the hearing, or if you want to address it now, just some of her, her first question, or you can talk after the hearing.
In regards to the, to the question about how we would vet groups and what would be the expectations of our neighborhoods, realistically, our department acts as a facilitator with many organizations out within the community, as well as the groups that plan to do events within park spaces. What we would probably be doing at that point in time would be collecting all the relevant details on the event, having some initial conversations with our partners within the community. And once we had that initial discussion, we would probably move forward, setting up some type of a meeting if it could be determined that this was going to be something that would be viable. We also vet and review each event's possibility of being within parks based on their unique needs. We are very aware that there are a lot of high-impact areas within the city. And we have done our best through multiple policies and, and practices and permits to try to manage those things, so that we are not overwhelming any certain area within the city. So, we look at many of these parks, while they are within the defined downtown district. We know there's a different standard of living in downtown as it pertains to the inconveniences of traffic and, and activity. But we look at these parks as being kind of on the fringe of that. We do not want to interfere with the day-to-day lifestyle of residing downtown, especially for well-established neighborhoods. So, that is, that is kind of our initial position. We will be open as we do the, work through our drafts, try to come up with the exact language and details that will make people feel comfortable with what we're putting forward. So, this isn't something that we are looking to just create a policy and hope that everyone accepts it and not, not continue to revisit this. We believe that the code change is necessary first and foremost, to be able to give that flexibility, and that in working with our community partners, we then have the ability to formalize policies and procedures which can be equally enforced across the board.
Great, thank you so much, Jason. Our next speaker is Candace Watkins. Again, Ms. Watkins, you have three minutes. If you could let us know any organizations that you are representing, and welcome to council.
My name is Candace Watkins. Thank you very much, council. Thank you, Director. Thank you, Mr. Nicholson, for all your hard work. I represent seven different organizations that do seven different major festivals in Columbus. Several of them are nonprofits, and they would be the ones eligible for this funding. Those events will really benefit from being able to have access to this funding. None of them had any idea there was funding available for them. So, the fact that we have a pilot program and the fact that we have this underway is really good. I'm sure it'll have some ginks in the get-along as we go along, trying to make it work, but things will mutate as it goes along. I also want to throw my personal support in the legislation that would allow liquor sales in certain downtown parks. I think that's going to really ease up some restrictions out on the street and make, make events easier and more, more contained. So, I thank you very much.
Thank you so much, Ms. Watkins, again, for coming down and for your comments. Our next speaker is Timothy Wolfstar. Again, you have three minutes. If you could let us know any organizations that you are representing, and welcome to council.
Thank you very much. Councilmembers, Director, Mr. Nicholson, also all of our other speakers, it's an honor to share the podium with you today. I represent Independence Day, a couple other festivals as well. Independence Day is its 10th year, and each year, we have grown in partnership with the Parks and Recs Department. We started in downtown, and we currently reside in the Franklinton neighborhood. Whether it's fireworks or other wildness that we have to pull off, the department has been instrumental in us growing our festival, making it better, and we've grown from that. I want to specify that, at this point, the level of funding which we would be eligible for would specifically offset specific costs, which through the Police Department and the city, we have grown to need and we've grown to enjoy. Our security costs are much higher, because we want to be a more secure and better festival. And we're also utilizing more of the city's resources, such as the stage, which we were able to rent last year, and several other resources that we would not have even known about without the Parks and Recs. So, from that standpoint, we're very thankful. And then, also, as a festival, which started on a very, very bootstrap budget, we remember back to the days where the startup funding, which is being proposed, would have been absolutely essential, made our festivals better, safer, and allowed us greater community outreach. So, from both the Independence Day Festival and everything else that we do, the startup funding is a, a key instrument within, and we appreciate it. I also think that the greatest factor which we're going to have from this open-source, public pilot program is going to be the relationships that can be built between these new festivals and the department itself. We've learned how valuable the relationship is with the department, with proper communication, and we are still learning but improving at our communication with the department and how we can do better on our side. And for these new festivals to have a leg up on starting with that moving forward, I think will be instrumental for a better community partnership. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much for coming down. Our next speaker is Calvin Harrison. Mr. Harrison, you have three minutes. If you could let us know any organizations that you are representing, and welcome to council.
My name is Calvin Harrison. I live on the east side of Columbus. I support the legislation, but I'm here to ask a simple question. On the east side, I, I am a member of two organizations, one being a Coalition for Saving the Neighborhood House, and the Coalition for Responsible and Sustainable Development on the Columbus east side. This past year, 2017, the Neighborhood House closed, but there was new infusion of services in the name of Community for New Direction. But my concern is Sawyer. Recreation in Parks is responsible for all recreation centers, so I come here to ask the question, what is the future for Sawyer?
And are those all your comments, Mr. Harrison? Mr. Harrison, Director Collins will speak with you after the hearing about Sawyer. That was correct, right?
Sawyer Recreation is being closed because with the Neighborhood House closing and the community for new direction being alcohol, drug intoxication, the credit right next to Sawyer. As of today, and as of January 1st, Sawyer, community wants to know.
Thank you, Mr. Harrison.
Councilmember Page and Mr. Harrison, happy to speak to you afterwards. Sawyer and the Neighborhood House and the efforts that are in the community to support those programs that have been offered at Sawyer and, and then through the Neighborhood House are fresh on my mind. I deal with them every day. In fact, we have a scheduled site visit to Sawyer Community Center in the next week to look at some of the infrastructure repairs that needed to be done. So, I'll happy, I'd be happy to brief on, on those and on the current status. But just from a general standpoint, the, the, the front of the building, which hosts those two organizations, it hosts the Centers for New Direction Program and also hosts the Children's Hospital Program, will stay open for the remainder of the year. The city is providing the support to make sure that that buildings, those sections of the building stay open. The remainder of the building is at discussion, and whether or not it's safe enough to stay open, but that is the, the back half of the building. The front half that hosts Centers for New Direction and Children's Hospital will be there for the remainder of the year to host their programs.
Thank you, Director. Our next speaker is David Roseman. Mr. Roseman, you have three minutes. If you could let us know any organizations that you are representing, and welcome to council.
Good afternoon, Chair, Councilmember Page, Stenziano, Director Collins, committee members and all. My name is David Roseman. I'm a resident of Columbus. I'm speaking on behalf of the Friends of Allen Creek and Tributaries as an interested party, or I'm a longtime board member. FACT is a nonprofit organization. We serve as the volunteer stewards for the lower Allen Creek watershed between Allen Creek Reservoir Dam to the Three Creeks Park Confluence. The FACT mission is to preserve and protect the quality and beauty of Allen Creek watershed and promote environmentally responsible recreational and educational opportunities and citizen participation at many levels. I'm here today to briefly address and bring to your attention FACT's letter of support and concerns submitted to Columbus Parks Leadership and your office on January 19th and earlier regarding the planned Allen Creek Trail Connector between Airport Drive, Johnstown Road, Crom Rec, Rec Center and Park. The FACT Executive Board supports the city Columbus intentions to construct the new Allen Creek Trail Connector, provided the route causes least detrimental impact to the existing Allen Creek watershed surrounding habitat and wildlife. That includes minimizing any potential harm to stream, creek, river, waterways, waterbanks, ravines, repairing corridor, natural greenway, forests, woodlands, wetlands, and vernal areas. Of the three possible route plans, FACT endorsed one of three, utilizing the designated Maintenance Drive, and I can share with you this document here, which is called the Alternate Alignment, and we're in favor of what is classified as alternate to the blue color. We, we oppose the other two routes, because they would destroy a large swath of mature woodland forests between Interstate 670 and Kensington Place. We understand as well that resulting eradication of those many trees would go against this mayor's executive order to preserve city property trees. I attended the Columbus Open House about this project on December 7th, where I expressed some initial concerns about the pathway route to Park City Planners and the on-hand MS consultant engineers. During that time, I also submitted my written comments via the feedback paperwork form. Recently, on February 22nd, we received an email notice from MS consulting's, consultants indicating the decision not to utilize our preferred route. FACT challenges the city and their engineers to design and budget the most direct and shortest connector with least adverse impact. We'd still like to have the opportunity to meet with you and all concerned parties, to review the trail's latest plans, gather more information, and discuss our concerns, and thank you very much.
Thank you so much, Mr. Roseman. We can speak briefly after this hearing to get your, will we have your contact information, and maybe set up a meeting with myself and the Director to go over some of your concerns in the Allen Creek Green Rachel?
We'd appreciate it. Thank you very much for the opportunity.
Thank you so much for coming down. And our final speaker this afternoon is Mr. Mike Collins. Mr. Collins, you have three minutes. If you could let us know any organizations that you are representing as well, and thank you for coming to council.
Thank you, Councilmember Page, Councilmember Stenziano. Director Collins, as you can tell, with dark hair and being taller, we're not related, and, and special event, what I consider special events, probably best friend in the city, Jason Nicholson. I'm here on behalf of the Boards of Directors and the teams that represent Red, White &amp; Boom and First Night Columbus. And I'm just here very briefly to cheerlead and support the basic pilot environment that's proposed. We've had the opportunity to review. We've shared some small thoughts and, and ideas. I, I will urge you not only to, I know you'll give it your attention, but to move it forward, and then ask you to also communicate and persuade your colleagues that I guess, as someone who's been involved in, in events in this town since 1980, because I am that old, I would urge you to see this also potentially as a tip of the iceberg, in that if you really look at the revenues, a collection of these events not only bring to the cultural heritage, you know, the heritage of the city, the cultural development of the city, and real meaningful things for children, as well as adults and people like me that are now seniors, I really ask you to look at this as one of the better investments. In my work in the educational arena, I would compare this to the importance of early childhood. So, thank you again, and we're delighted to be here in support, and I bring the unanimous support of both Boards of Directors. Thank you for your work.
Thank you so much, Mr. Collins. We appreciate your comments. Those are all of our speakers for this evening. Before we conclude our hearing, I would like to ask the Director or Jason to speak briefly on this special events program. If you could just talk about, again, how organizations can contact the department, what's the timeframe for the app- what's the timeframe for the applications, and if an organization misses the deadline this year, are they able to still request any funding later in the year? Thank you.
Chair Page, councilmembers, a couple of things, yes. So, as soon as we do finalize the approval of the program, as I said before, we'll submit to a final version with the input that we've received tonight through our other stakeholder meetings. And once we, it is legislated and approved, we will make an announcement to all of our special event groups that have received funding in the past and that we've been in contact with regarding this, to let them know about the timeline. Of course, it'll be an adjusted timeline based on legislation. In terms of contact information, I think almost all of our special event folks have Jason Nicholson's phone number, maybe even his cell phone number. But reaching our office at Columbus Recreation and Parks will put you into our special events team, and they'll, they'll connect you to the information that's available. We will also try to have an online presence about this program as soon as that it's fully adopted, so that people can look at it and read it over and be able to know the parameters on our website. And then, finally, what I would suggest is that what I think we need to do in this first year of the pilot is see the initial application timeline, look at how much funding is requested versus dollars available, and then we'll report back to you, Councilmember Page, as to what the delta is in terms of if we have funds available and/or if there's a, a lack of funds for all of the groups that are applying. And at that point, we'll be able to decide whether or not there'll be a second funding round in 2017. In the meantime, I would encourage folks, I think that one of the revisions that we're going to talk about as we leave tonight is what about if, if the application timeline is from, I'm going to, I'm going to say April 1st, I'm just going to make that number up, April 1st through a certain deadline date, the question would be, for the events that happened prior to April 1st, can they be eligible for funding up through the April 1st of the following year? And so, we need to do two things. We need to check on the legal aspect of that with our city attorney's office, and then look at it from a procedure standpoint, how that would work, but that might be an example of a revision we make today that would be available. I would encourage folks who are looking for the future to think about that for following years.
Thank you so much, Director. And as we conclude this hearing, I want to thank my colleague, Councilmember Sensiano, for attending, and also Councilmember Harden. And I thank you, Director Collins and Jason Nicholson, for your hard work into this proposal, as well as the code change regarding the, the parks that can have alcohol permits. We definitely appreciate just your dedication to service and to make sure that our Recreation and Parks system is providing resources to all of our residents to do great things. And I'd like to thank all the speakers for coming down. Many of you are hosting amazing events throughout our spring and summer and fall that make our city the best place to live, work, and play. And I am just really excited about your, the upcoming festival season, as we call it, and what you have to offer our youngest to our oldest residents. So, I look forward to attending your events, and again, thank you all for coming down. And I would like to thank my staff for all the hard work they put into putting this hearing together, and also to acknowledge our Recreation and Parks Commission Chair, who is present with us, Mr. David Paul. He puts in a lot of hard work as well, just reviewing all the proposed legislation from the department and keeping all of us in line. So, thank you all, and have a wonderful evening.